We got through the first meeting. You got through the first meeting.
We're on.
Green light.
Got it. All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. I will be presiding because Missy Hall, our president, is absent tonight. It is... What time, Todd?
It is 6:08.
6:08. And if you'll stand, we'll say pledges allegiance to the flag. Todd, would you like to do that, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all members are present except for Missy. And we'll start with our recognitions, our employee recognition.
Yeah, first up is our employee recognitions this evening. We have Julia Dean from Buffalo Middle School. Julie is with us. Hi, Julie. Julie is an amazing, and I'm reading from the nomination here for you. Julie is an amazing social worker. She works well as part of our student support team. Her communication with parents is exceptional. She does an awesome job staying on top of student attendance and tracking families down who we cannot get in contact with at the school level. She also cares deeply about students and their mental health. Students know they can go to her and check in if they're having a rough day. Finally, she is an excellent resource for helping students and families in need as well as finding outside services to help them through whatever they are dealing with. So Julie is one of our social workers, and again, she is at Buffalo Middle School. Julie, thank you for what you do. Come on up, and I'm going to give you a...
Oh, boy.
Get a shirt.
T-shirt.
Is Sidney Harry with us from Spring Valley? Sidney is a biology teacher at Spring Valley High School. And it says, "I am not privy to being in Mrs. Miss Harry's classroom, so I can't give specific examples, but my child has a newfound level of confidence, motivation, and assuredness. This carries over, this carries over not just in biology but in other subjects in school as well as helping her reach her goals outside of the school setting. She is excited for life and brags on Miss Harry's teaching style often. Thank you, Mrs. Harry, for leading my student closer to her pre-COVID mindset of setting goals and achieving them." That's quite a testimony coming from a parent. Thank you for what you do. And is, I didn't see Homer here. Is Homer here? And Kim Fisher. I didn't see Kim here. Homer is a cook at Fort Gay that was recognized, and Kim is a teacher at Spring Valley High School. Kim has started up the science fair for Spring Valley High School, and we had 17 students that qualified for the regional science fair from her honors biology classes, so we're proud of the work that she's done there. So that is our recognitions for this evening. Ladies, if you'll come up, we're going to get a picture with you. Jeb, do you care, or Nikki, do you care to give me a picture? Nikki will get it. Yeah, you just come to the center there. Gentlemen, you can make your way to the inside there if you want. If you want to go to the inside, I think we've got room. Thank you, ladies. Thank you for coming.
And now we will have our presentation, measuring success with Nikki Staffey, our coordinator of assessment and data analysis for school improvement.
Thank you. I keep this. Just want you to know that.
Okay, we don't have a lot of updates tonight, but we're going to skip over to page 10.
Okay.
So on 10 is our chronic absenteeism data. So you can see for the month of March, we're at 27% chronically absent, which I know is a little up, but let's remember that we ended last school year at 33%, so we are still in a better position right now than we were. But our goal is we want to get that under 20%. So we're going to, we just had a meeting today and looked at our strategic plan. We're starting to plan for next year and tweak our goals, and we're going to be keeping that as our goal for next year, is trying to get that number under 20% for next year. And then if you go to page 11, that is our staff attendance data for March. We're at 15% of our staff are chronically absent, so that's down from this fall, so that's good as well. And then if we skip over to page 13, today in our strategic planning meeting, as we were going through all of our action steps of our plan and updating progress notes, one of the things we looked at was what our cadre is, our math cadre, our ELA cadre, and our data team, things that have been going on this winter. So here's just some notes here of what's been taking place in that cadre work. So our math cadre has been working on developing tests for grades three through five and our test authoring platform, which is part of our testing platform, using the West Virginia Educator's Guide. They're also developing a suggested module assessment calendar for grades three through eight that we will share with teachers next year. Our ELA cadre is utilizing resources from the INVEST conference. They're really working diligently right now with Rhonda Neal's working hard in the schools on the writing prompts to prepare for the GSA, and she's working with those cadre members to share those writing resources. We have a new resource called Write On with Cambe, and it's where our students go into the testing platform where they take the GSA and in those practice tests in there, they're able to, once they've written so, so many sentences, it provides feedback to them. And so it's, it's a really cool new feature we have. And then our data team, which is the group that I lead, back in December, we met and we looked at various data tracking templates. We had it shared out, and we looked at various reports in STAR in our Cambium. And then in February, we met to review all of this, the current winter benchmarking data. So those are just some updates on what's taking place in those leadership groups. We really rely on our teacher leaders to help get information out. I know as I get information from the State Department regarding assessment, I push that information out to the data team as, as well as our administrators, because they help get that information to all of our teachers. And I know that it's the same with our math and ELA quadries. Now underneath that is our updated walkthrough data. I was happy when I ran this because we finally are starting to get back to some consistency in school. And so for March, we have 287 walkthroughs documented, so that's much better than what we've seen the last couple months. And I was very excited to see that when you look at high sink ratio, those walkthroughs labeled high, we were at 43%, which was the highest we've been since school started this year. So that's really positive. And if you go to the back page, this is our participation ratios. And once again, looking at high participation, 72% of our walkthroughs were coded as high participation, which, you know, our highest percentage was 74, and we're almost back to that. So that's really positive as well. I think our administrators and our teachers see that, you know, we're, we're back in the swing of things. We have, the test season is quickly approaching us, and so they're getting those participation ratios up and those sink ratios. I do want to say that SAT School Day is coming up soon. It's our 11th graders. That's going to be on April 8. And then the West Virginia General Summit of Assessment, our district window opens for that on May 5. So our teachers are preparing for that. It's quickly approaching. And a really exciting thing is last year, the State Department created a parent portal, and that's where this fall, our parents were able to go into that portal and see their child's scores from last year. And this year, they've updated that to include our benchmarking data. But the newest update is typically our parents don't see their student's scores from the spring until the fall. This year, with that parent portal, once kids take the GSA within 24 hours, parents will have access to their child's scores. So I'm going to be sharing out more information on that with you all, getting that information out to parents and principals. We actually just, they created a letter so for parents to access that data, each parent will have to input their child's name, a birthday, and a six-digit unique access code. So I've created letters to go home with each one of our students that test in grades three through eight that has their access code on it. And our principal's meeting next week, I will be sharing those with our administrators to disperse out to families. So that is an exciting thing coming, and I'll share more information with that. So, any questions?
Moving right along. Thank you, Nikki. All right, and now we have career launch updates.
Ms. Booton's here.
Kristy Booton, yes.
Okay, so Mr. Roger Danner asked me to come and share with you where we are now from where we were this fall. Bear in mind that this is our third year of the career launch and only the second year that all three high schools in the county are taking part. Currently, we have 26 students at Spring Valley High School who are in the workforce, 12 students at Tulsa High School, and 69 students at Wayne High School who are out in the workforce doing internships. And total, we have 42 business partners countywide who are working with our students. Some new developments that we've had, three students from the early learning child development class, the first class of the ECAT CTE class that Miss Justice is teaching at Wayne High School. She's just got that one class. They were added to the AmeriCorps payroll last month. These students, they're completing internship hours at Wayne Elementary School Library, and they'll receive $1,920 for completing 100 hours of service. So that's $19.20 an hour. Level One Fasteners came onboard as a partner. They're located in Huntington. They hired 14 student interns this semester. If you're unfamiliar with Level One, they're a West Virginia-based company, and for 60 years, they have been producing Level One certified specialty fasteners for the U.S. Navy and their subcontractors. They do all Department of Defense work. Five of their interns work in the shipping department. Those are interns who are 17 years old. And they took five who are 18 years old, and they actually work on the floor with machinists. Then a couple of weeks later, they came back and they hired four students to work in the office. And those students are doing order entry and they're training to do certification work for the work that they're putting out. All of these students are being paid $15 an hour.
Wow.
Through our work developing the MEDX program, we were connected with Carly Priest, the pharmacy manager of Marshall Health, with the closing of the local pharmacies. Marshall Health has a need for pharmacy technicians. Mr. Miller thought that that would be a great opportunity for our project Lead the Way Biomed students. Because Biomed isn't a pharmacy tech CTE, though, students had to be 18 years old to apply. We had three students apply. Three students were accepted. It is a award-approved pharmacy tech trainee program. They'll provide these students with on-the-job training and preparation for their National Pharmacy Surface Certification exam. They're earning $16.50. They're earning $16.50 an hour while they're training and they'll get a 50 cent on the hour raise once they successfully complete their national boards. Our MEDX students are doing well. They drop shadowed in different departments at Cabell Huntington Hospital during the fall. They're currently doing the same at St. Mary's. Now, we have 10 students in the MEDX class of 2026. They'll be choosing their certification pathway, whether it be Patient Care Tech or Medical Assistant by the end of May. Marshall Health Network allotted us 15 slots for the class of 2027 and we have filled all of those slots. Just as a side note, Cabell Midland didn't fill all of their slots, so.
Oh.
Way to go Wayne. And the MEDX signing day is scheduled for May the 9 at 11:00 a.m. And those invitations will be forthcoming in the next few weeks. On April 29, though, Marshall Health Network will be conducting panel interviews at Wayne High School with the intent of offering positions to Mrs. Maynard's Therapeutic Services class of seniors now that aren't part of the MEDX program. And this opportunity was made possible by our partnership with Marshall Health Network and the strong relationship that Mrs. Maynard has built in taking these students over to the hospital for their clinicals. AEP is offering a power line mechanic internship this summer during the month of July through their work with the West Virginia Education Alliance. This internship is for rising juniors and seniors. It pays $16 an hour for a total of $2,640 for the month of July. We've had three rising seniors apply, so we're hopeful that one of them will be chosen for that. And we've also entered three of our partnerships. One was 12 Pole Trading Post, the one with Level One Fasteners and the Marshall Health Network into the Hope School Business Partnership of the Year competition that's sponsored through the West Virginia Education Alliance. They're going to choose regional winners, two regional winners, there's four regions, two regional winners per region. Those will receive $2,000 apiece. And then those eight will be put in for a state winner to be chosen and that state winner will receive $10,000. So we're hopeful that we'll get some recognition there.
That's great.
Lot of good news.
Yeah, a lot of good news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Julie and Sydney, you guys are, I know, we know you got to work tomorrow. You're more than welcome to sneak out, you're more than welcome to stay. But if you want to sneak out, don't feel like you have to stay for the whole meeting. Thanks.
We do, y'all don't. All right, we got any good news?
Yeah, the Tulsa High School Drama Club is putting on Shrek Jr., the Musical today. And I had a chance to go down this morning, they were, did the performance. They had a packed gym with elementary students there for the performance. They, they do a really good job. Ms. Muncie and Ms. Gilkerson, the music teacher there, they do a really good job and, and it was a good presentation. So we're, we're proud of them this morning.
Any other good news? Like girls' basketball teams? Wayne High School, Spring Valley?
We did that last week, I think, didn't we?
No, we didn't, we did it at the special meeting, remembering y'all looked at me.
Two-state champs.
Two-state champs.
That's worth saying twice.
Yeah, they learned not to mess around with Wayne County girls.
They went to the semifinals, they were in the final four.
Yep. Okay, all right, informational items. Regular meeting on Tuesday, April 8, beginning at 6 o'clock in the Board Conference Room. Spring break is April 14 through April 18. We will reconvene our special meeting for March 11th on Tuesday, April the 15th, beginning at 4:00 p.m. in the Board Conference Room. We have a regular meeting on Tuesday, April 22nd, beginning at 6:00 in the Board Conference Room. And then we will have special meeting on Tuesday, April 29th, beginning at 4:00 at Crum Pre-K 8. And then we will dismiss there and go to Tulsa High School and that will start again at 5:15 in Fort Gay. And I will probably have to call in on that April 22nd. I have cataract surgery and I don't know what time, okay? So I'll call. Okay. Do we have any construction updates?
Yep, in your packet of information that you were provided tonight, on page one is the update, the last update I had received from EP Leach and Sons, the contractor. You'll see the updates there that the Masons have laid 99% of the brick. They're waiting on the accent block for the front corner. There's also mentioned down in the work plan for the next two weeks, which is the week that we're in now, that the roofers are back to install curbs and walls for the roofing and that the West Virginia Heating and Cooling is ready to do the tie-in to the, to the main building's HVAC system. And that's scheduled to start Saturday, March 29. So that'll be this weekend. And so there's a list of items there that show you what's going on with that project. But it's, it's moving along, so we've had some good weather and they've really made some progress.
Good.
The other thing I want to mention is, at a previous meeting, I'd mentioned that we had some, we had a sinkhole in the middle of the Spring Valley High School soccer field. And that has developed into quite a problem. That drainage pipe, there's a drainage pipe that runs from the main water inlet behind the fire department there, if you're familiar with the area. And it rain, it runs underneath of the soccer field. So right out in the middle of the soccer field during that last huge storm that we had, that, that pipe came apart and it sucked a lot of dirt down with it and created a huge sinkhole there in the center of the field. So we brought a contractor in to locate the pipe and the pipe is 20 feet deep. 20 feet deep. So if we were going to replace that pipe, we would have to destroy that, basically destroy that soccer field and have a line that runs 20 feet deep. So we're working, I met with the West Virginia Department of Highways on Friday and we're working on a, installing just a new line. We plan on closing that whole backup as soon as we get the new line installed. And we're going to come across the parking lot, but it's, it's going to be a, it's going to be more of a project than what we first thought when we, when we first started digging. Yeah, to run over to Spring Valley Drive and we're working, we have to do permit forms. And so I'm working with the State Department of Highways to get all of that approved.
Any idea what that'll end up costing?
No, no. I've got the contractor that was there at the field is preparing the nestment and we'll see if we have to take it out the bid. But it's, it's going to be a, a, a project, but it, it has to be done. If not, we're going to continue to have serious flooding issues there at the site.
It's a half.
Yeah. That's all the updates I have.
Okay, let's see. Do we have any delegations? No? Okay. All right, Superintendent Reports.
Okay, if you'll move to page two of your packet that we provided you this evening.
I'm having a hard time keeping up with that packet. Got it.
On page two, we had our, you know, we have our Wayne County Robotics League where we have teams competing at the elementary and middle school level. A majority of the schools in the district participate in that. Our teams have qualified for the state championships up in Fairmont and they competed this past week. And pleased to announce that Lavalet Elementary was the teamwork champions. That's the actual points that are scored by the, by the robots during the competition. They were teamwork champion and they have qualified for the world competition in Dallas, Texas.
Wow, awesome, that's good news.
They'll be going this spring. In addition, we had several schools that picked up other awards. East Lynn picked up the sportsmanship award and that's exactly what it sounds like. It's how their players interacted with all the other teams at the site. Buffalo Elementary received the Think Award for their, for their design and their coding. Buffalo Middle also received the Think Award at the middle school level. Crum K through 8 received the Amaze Award, that is for overall design and functioning of the robot. Spring Valley High School was also there competing. They received the Build Award and the Judges Award. Other schools that we had on site were Wayne Middle School, Wayne Elementary School, and CK Middle School. So we were well represented at that, at that state competition. And again, we're going to be represented once again at the world competition, this time by Lavalet Elementary.
That is great, awesome.
Next item on the list is the Major Improvement Project submission. So we had talked at a previous meeting about looking at doing some safe school entrances and ideally, we want to get to all the schools in the district. The Major Improvement Project grant is for up to a million dollars. And so we have been onsite at four different schools. Those schools were Spring Valley, Kellogg, Vincent, and Tulsa High School. And we have, we're putting together a submission to go in and apply for a certain amount of money, up to a million dollars to be able to do some safe school entries, similar to what we did at Wayne Middle School, to be able to do those projects at those schools. We won't get an answer back on that grant until June. And again, that's a grant, so without receiving that funding, those projects will not continue. But we, we are going to, to submit that to, to see if it's approved.
Okay.
Next up on the list is the RIF transfer updates on page three of your packet. And I had provided this to you by email as well. This is a summary of the schools and the sites within the district, including the central office. And it gives you four columns. You have your professional positions that are being eliminated. And if you see the word vacancy beside one of those, that means a person was not affected, that the position was already vacant or was scheduled to be vacant at the end of the year, possibly by retirement. And so a specific person isn't affected by that cut, but those positions are going to be cut. In your professional additions column, those are the, those are the positions that we anticipate that we're going to have to add, either because they're being consolidated with another position or just because of enrollment shifts in the district. And then you have the same thing with service eliminations and service additions. So again, at our April 8 agenda, we will see the people that are actually affected by these changes and you'll be asked to approve the RIF and transfers that evening.
Now, we don't have the professional cut out.
I'm not, not sure what I'm looking at here, but mine only goes to Wayne Elementary?
Yeah, there should be a second page there.
No, no.
Okay, when they, when they copied it, they didn't get the second page, so I'll get it to you before you leave here.
Well, we've, we've got one.
Yeah.
It hasn't changed, right?
There was one change in it.
Okay, well, you can just send it to us.
Yeah.
Get it to us thirsty.
And so those are the eliminations, the additions, both on the professional side and the service side. Next up is solar installation update. Our next solar project is going to be at Wayne Middle School. That project is scheduled to start in mid-April. On page four of your packet, it's some information on our summer programs. So over the last several years, we've been able to run extensive summer school programs because we had funding that came from the federal government that was specifically designed for summer learning programs. That funding dried up at the end of last summer. So we are having to cut back on summer offerings. So you'll see the plans here over the, over the several pages. So on page four, you see a summary of the 2025 Summer Exploration Camp. This is for elementaries and this is in response to the Third Great Success Act. So we will be targeting those kids that are not meeting standards in English Language Arts and Math and they will be invited to these camps. So you see the dates and times that the camps run at the top of the page and then you see the locations at the bottom. Now, in previous years, we've been able to do a lot more locations, but with that, with that money going away, we have to, we have to shrink that down. So we're looking at four locations, that's Buffalo Elementary, CK Elementary, Crum Pre-K through 8, and the East Lynn Elementary. Those are our most heavily attended programs in, in their particular areas of the county. Page five.
And so, and there will be no transportation, no buses?
No transportation. On page five, you see that the Summer Exploration Camp schedule, so you'll get an idea of what each day will look like for those students that are involved in the program. On page six is the Credit Recovery Program, so that's our high school program. So we will have a credit recovery program that runs during the summer. Again, you see those dates. This year's program will be located at Spring Valley High School. On page seven, you see the letter that goes to parents. And again, students that are identified as performing below level or provided additional instruction in reading, language arts, and/or math through the extended year learning. And that's through that summer program. So anybody that is performing below level will receive this letter and be invited to attend those summer programs. And then on page eight is our Extended School Year Program. So our Extended School Year Program is services that we provide for special need students who need additional time working on their IEP goals. That Extended School Year Program operates yearly and it's a, a good portion of that is funded through federal funds. So that will be operating as well. And then on page nine, Mark?
There it is.
There it is.
Page two?
We got it. Okay.
So they got out of whack when they made the copy. But that, that's, that's page two there, so you see the overall eliminations and additions. And then there's been a lot of news over the last week or so about the U.S. Department of Education and changes in the U.S. Department of Education and how that might have impacted the schools. We have received a letter from the State Department of Education that indicates that our key programs that are federally funded, including Title I and our Special Ed Program, should not be impacted by those changes with the U.S. Department of Education. Now, this is early in the game and we'll see how that plays out. But they, the, the federal government is sending out some assurances that those key programs like that are not going to be impacted by cuts that are made.
Considering who's in charge of Department of Education, is that something we're going to have to wrestle with? Linda McMahon, WWE?
That's a good pun there, Dennis.
Yeah.
Next up on the list, on page 10 of your packet, we have an advertisement that's going into the paper that'll be running for the next few weeks. We need to do some roof work, roof replacement project for Lavalet Elementary. I believe that's building five of the school. It's the building that's closest to the highway there. We need, we need to replace that roof. Once we replace that roof, that, that school will, all the roofs on that school will have been put on within the last five years. And so we have that advertised, that's, that's a real need and needs to be taken care of. And on page 11, we also have, and there was a note here, we had to make a correction. We are bidding out the mowing and trimming services for the, for the mowing season that's getting ready to start here in a couple of weeks. So those, that advertisement will be in the paper as well. And so the, we're going to do a pre-bid meeting on April 3 and then April 7th is the, April 7th will be the bid opening for that. So be expecting that on, coming to you on a future agenda for your approval.
Okay.
And then the last thing that I have is ADA accessibility for playgrounds. We've done some ADA accessibility work at Fort Gay, K through, Pre-K through 8. Our next project is down at Wayne Elementary School. I'll be bringing you some quotes. We're going to do some asphalt work down there to make more of the playground accessible to wheelchair. And also, we're going to be putting in some safe pathways through the playground itself here over the next few months. So you can expect to see some, you can expect to see some bids on that coming forward as well. That's all I have.
Okay, a lot, a lot, yeah. Okay, a lot, yeah. Any board directors? Any board reports? No unfinished business, okay. New Business Consent Action. The superintendent recommends approval of the following action items. Additional items received prior to the time of the meeting may be added. Discussion and/or separate action of items may be requested by members of the board and/or superintendent. Items are subject to change. Any blanks will be filled in prior to the meeting. In the event of nominee withdrawals, we reserve the right to put the next candidate in the position. Consider for approval the recommended personnel matters pages one and two.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll say.
Randy Trout one made the motion, Dennis made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
I don't think I had a question. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Number two, consider for approval purchase requisitions, orders, quotes in excess of $5,000, pages three and four.
Motion.
Motion by Randy. Second by Dennis. Any questions or concerns?
Yes, I would like to, page three on the Tulsa High School five-ton heat pump. What is the location going to be where?
I believe that's on the ROTC classrooms.
Okay.
I'll double check that for you and verify, Mark, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that's where that was.
Now, is our crew going to put it on?
Yes. Yeah, we're just purchasing the equipment. Our crews are going to install.
Any other questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. New Business Separate Action Items. Number one, consider for approval contract for construction management services for the Buffalo K-8 project.
So moved.
Motion by Mark Ross, second by Dennis Ashworth. Are there any questions or concerns?
Todd, we had the contract looked at by.
Yeah, it's.
Council.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on.
Yeah, legal counsel reviewed it, and it was in your.
It's in that separate attachment.
Yeah, it was in your separate attachments, pages two through nine.
Yeah.
That's, of course, that, this contract will last for approximately a period of about two years during the construction of the school.
Okay.
The fee, the fee is $457,000. That is reimbursable through the state grant that we have for the project. So the SBA funds that are involved in this project will, will pay. And then we are hopeful that these services will result in reduced costs for the overall project. So we're hoping that it pays for itself.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Consider for approval out-of-state field trip request. Motion?
Motion.
I'll move.
Okay, Randy. Second, any second?
I'll say.
Okay. Any thoughts or concerns, questions? That's the Wayne High School baseball trip, right?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. That's Wayne High School baseball traveling to Compass Cove Resort in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina on April 13th through April 19th.
Spring break.
Spring break and funded by Wayne High School Baseball Booster. Wish I was a coach.
Think somebody from board overlooked them?
Yes, I really do. I may have to shepherd on Todd. Okay, all right. Any potential items for future agendas?
This isn't an item for the future agenda, but I meant to mention this earlier during the superintendent's reports. FEMA is going to be coming into southern Wayne County for the flooding reimbursements for people to be able to apply.
Oh, good.
And they have asked for permit, permission to use Tulsa High School to conduct that work. So the school had reached out to me and provided me the paperwork. The, they do have a location that they can use down there. They're going to use that, the auxiliary gym and allow members of the public to come in, be able to apply. So the school said that they could definitely work with it. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that we're planning on letting them use property down there to do that work.
Oh, good. That'll help the people a lot.
Welcome with open arms.
Yeah.
Yes. Good news. Thank you. All right, any other items?
Yes, I have a question. I guess I brought it up a couple of times before about the future of the fire service class. I spoke with our instructor, Dave Cottle, the other day. And in order for us to apply for that grant through the state like we did this year, as y'all know, we didn't have to pay anything for the instructor. And he's hoping that we can get that for two more classes next year. But we need to make a decision on whether we are going to be in support of that and what locations that we want to have it in.
Okay.
So that's for the next agenda?
Yes.
Soon.
We can put it on the April 8th agenda?
Yeah, the next trigger agenda.
He, he's willing to come and speak about it.
All right. Anything else?
Make motion adjourned.
Okay, any one second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero, and it is 6:48.
Did it kill you because of the chair you couldn't make the motion adjourned?
Darn it.
I didn't, I didn't fight her, did I? No, she couldn't.
I thought we were just going to sit here.